Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the August 10, 2015 Meeting of Dover City Council. Please stand and join me for the invocation which tonight will be given by Councilman David Anderson filed by the Pledge to our Nation's Flag by Councilman Roy Sutherland.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve. We ask for your wisdom. We ask that we be able to serve and make decisions with a pure heart of service to the people that we've been elected to serve. We ask that your blessing be upon this meeting and upon each of the citizens in your name. Amen.
Pledge of the Independence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Thank you, Councilman Sutherland. You have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
If not, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Motion's been made by Councilman Hutchinson, seconded by Councilman Sutherland to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries unanimously. We now have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda, considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Anderson.
Mr. President, I would like to remove Item 9, the Quarterly Review of the Capital Investment Plan, CIP, from the consent agenda.
Councilman Lewis.
I would like Item Number 12 removed with full explanation.
Are there any other additions to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
So move, second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Neal and seconded by Councilman Anderson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutherland?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0. Item Number 2 is a public hearing, final reading of the proposed ordinance, number 2015-12, rezoning request for properties located at 35 and 39 North New Street. First reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of June 22, 2015. Copies are available at the entrance of the council chambers. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading of the ordinance, 2015-12, by title only, which is simply to allow for the waiving of the reading. A separate motion will be necessary for its adoption.
So move, second.
Moved by Councilman Hare and seconded by Councilman Hutchinson to waive the formal reading of ordinance. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance 2015-12, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Dover by changing the zoning designation of properties located at 35 and 39 North New Street. Mrs. Townsend, would you please brief members of council on this proposed rezoning?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is two properties at the southeast corner of New and Fulton Streets. It is across Fulton Street, south of the Wesley College tennis courts. Currently, the property is zoned RG1, general residence zone, which is the zoning classification of the majority of the downtown neighborhood areas. The requested zoning classification is RG3, which is called group housing zone. That does not mean group homes. What that means is townhouses. This went to the Planning Commission on July 20, 2015, for a public hearing. There were no members of the public that spoke with regard to the application. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended in favor of the rezoning request. The subject property is located within the Downtown Development District, and the townhouses that are desired by the applicant are a housing style that is something encouraged in restoring central Dover and our Downtown Development District implementation. Currently, we are in the process of working on a change to the general residence zone to allow for additional housing styles, but as of the time of this rezoning application, those amendments had not yet been drafted. They did go to the Legislative Finance Committee this evening. So again, after a public hearing where there were no members of the public who spoke with regard to the request, the Planning Commission recommended in favor of the rezoning request. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Townsend, members of council? Councilman Sutherland.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to move to accept staff recommendation.
I have to have the public hearing first.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, see how there are no further questions? I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? Or anyone who would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? Anyone to speak against the proposed rezoning? Anyone who has come forward? We'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Sutherland.
I move to accept staff recommendation, as stated.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Sutherland and seconded by Councilman Hare. Accept staff recommendation. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutherland?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0. Item Number 3, public hearing violation of dangerous building ordinance for property located at 128 South Queen Street owned by Joe W. Burden, Jr. I would ask Mrs. Townsend to brief us on this item.
Okay, this is, again, property located at 128 South Queen Street. Since 2000, there have been 16 code enforcement cases with relation to this property, exterior violations, gutters, soffits, a lot of grass violations, zoning violations, specifically the home being used as a boarding house after that use had ceased, so the non-conforming status had expired. The house was registered as vacant by city staff on May 23, 2014. It was condemned by city staff on November 18, 2013, again, being that it was used as an illegal boarding house, and because there were also structural concerns about the second story room over the porch. A structural engineering report has been obtained. The rental license was suspended again in November 2013. We're bringing it forward as unfit for habitation, general welfare concerns, code violations in unoccupied buildings. So I will show you some pictures. I will say, there had been work started on the property several months ago. It had paused once we sent the notice that it was being scheduled for city council. There has been some progress made, so these pictures were taken last week. This is a picture of the property from the front. You can see the construction debris in the front yard. You can tell, not as much on this, okay, there we go. There's still quite a bit of work to do. You can see where there's some of the siding on the rear of the building is buckling. There were also, I don't think, I'm sorry, you can't see it on this, there's some other areas where our inspectors have some concerns regarding the condition of the siding. This is an area, if you see right where it transitions from the blue paint to the white, you can see siding that is not properly fastened just to the right of where you have the cursor, down a little bit, right there, right, no, up, there, that's it. These are some interior photos. Again, renovations are ongoing, so it's hard to tell what is the general condition of the property and what is related to the code violations. But you can see there are areas that don't have trim. This is an area where you can see the light fixture, the hole is too large for the light fixture, so you have gaps around it. You know, again, just, it's, with the work that's being done, it's improved from what it was. This is showing the condition, a lot of staining in the carpet. It's better than it was, but again, we still have a number of concerns. This shows you the bathroom. Again, you can see the steps don't have any type of floor covering on them. That's the kitchen. Again, doesn't have appliances, but again, it's in progress. A lot of the repairs that have been made have been since we scheduled it for city council presentation this evening. Staff's recommendation is to declare the building and any accessory structures on the property dangerous, to order the property to be repaired or demolished by the property owner by September 10, and if not done within 10 days of that date set, that staff would move forward with the demolition and recover costs as specified. So with that, I would take, any questions you may have?
Questions for Mrs. Townsend. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Townsend, I really didn't see anything worthy of demolition considering all the houses that we have backlog. Is there something I'm missing? What's the problem there?
Again, this is a property that we had condemned because it was a boarding house. There were concerns with the way the back of the house was settling. We do have a structural report. The structural report is tied to the building permit. It was continuing to deteriorate and continued vacant until we scheduled it to come to city council. So again, what we're asking of city council is that you require that it be repaired or demolished, or that we would demolish it. Before we had scheduled it for city council, they had started some repairs, and then it just stopped. So, you know, we need to, it needed to either move forward or be demolished, and that's, you know, the hope is if you tell them to repair or demolish, that they will continue, but that they need to continue with the repairs. They need to complete the repairs on the property, which would include taking care of the siding that is in poor repair, replacing it if necessary. It's not just the structural report items.
Thank you.
Councilman Lewis.
How many times has this property been brought before city council?
It has not been brought before city council before.
This is the first time?
This is the first time.
Okay.
And it is one where we do get neighbor complaints, especially when it was used as a rooming house, but even in the past six months, we've gotten neighbor complaints.
How severe of a safety violation is this property?
Well, it is-
From a scale from 1 to 10?
Well, it's not boarded, so it's in an area where we are frequently finding people in vacant houses for reasons that are less than honorable. So, you know, I don't like putting a number on it, but our experience has been the vacant houses that, you know, are not, you know, are not being renovated is those are the houses where we end up having fires, drugs, prostitution, so.
So you had indicated that there's people also, because it's not boarded and such, going in there and-
We have not found, we have not found people in there.
Okay.
But in this, in this area, in the downtown area, we have found many of the houses within, you know, a block, within a half a block have been, when they're unsecured, there are people in them. So again, if they are going to continue at a reasonable pace and continue fixing the house and repairing it, then I don't think we're opposed to that, but what we're saying is it needs to either be repaired or demolished.
Now, you had indicated that there has been violations since 2000?
Yes.
You have indicated 16 violations, and it was being used as a boarding house. I'm just curious to know why it hasn't been brought before city council previously, if this has been going on since 2000?
Yeah, again, we bring, we bring things forward based on a variety of criteria. One is if we're getting a lot of complaints, if they're not making the repairs. There were several property transfers over the years, so Mr. Burden, Sr., purchased the property, I can't remember what year, so there was a period of time where the ownership had transferred, and then we did not find it to be used as a rooming house until we started getting complaints and scheduled inspections, and that was in 2013. So, you know, when we say there's 16 code enforcement cases since 2000, that could be, a lot of them are, they don't cut the grass, and we have to send a contractor out to cut the grass. Sometimes it's junk in the yard. Sometimes it's, you know, peeling paint. So not all of the violations are things that would bring them necessarily to council. When we found it being used as a boarding house, we condemned it, and we said it needed to be restored to a single-family home, and that was in 2013. Ultimately, that was appealed to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment upheld that it was a non-conforming use that had expired and that it needed to be converted. That happened in 2014. Later in 2014, Mr. Burden passed away, so, you know, we were hoping that, as we worked with the Burden family, that they, that we would have seen more progress by this point. And that's where we are. But again, this is one where we get a lot of neighbor complaints of the condition of the property.
Okay. One more question. If it's voted to condemn this property and tear it down, what does the city do? Sell the land? Auction it off? What's the protocol?
When, okay, when the city demolishes the property, we place a lien, and the way we place the lien, it attaches to any property owned by that particular owner in Kent County. So, and then the amount of the demolition also goes on the tax bill. So we can recover the cost either by, one, it being billed and paid, it being paid on the tax bill, it being attached to a lien, so that if this property or any other property held by the owner sells, we would recover our costs. And then there have been cases where we have acquired them through share of sale. So after two years, delinquent in taxes, it goes to share of sale. In some cases, somebody else purchased it at share of sale, and we recover our costs. There have been a number of properties that we have acquired. If you look at the Legislative and Finance Committee meeting this evening, there were two such properties that were on the agenda to go forward for us to put out to bid, so that the properties can transfer from the city to another party and that we can recover our costs. And we have a couple others that went to the Legislative Finance Committee earlier in the month, or last month, that would do the same thing. So we don't recover the costs quickly, but we do work to recover as much as we can. The purpose of, you know, demolishing some of these properties is that, you know, they pose a blight to the community, and they're a safety concern.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Hosfeld, then Councilman Hutchinson, then Councilman Sutherland.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Townsend, can you tell me how many vacant buildings Mr. Burden's property management group owns in the city?
Our last count, we had 33 registered vacant buildings.
That are owned by Mr. Burden?
That are owned by Dr. Burden, yes.
And what condition are they?
Um, all of them have some degree of violations on them. You know, in some cases, they're in the queue to come before council, and other cases-
All 33?
Not all 33.
Oh, okay.
Some of them.
Okay.
There are a number, there's one on Ann Avenue, for instance, that we had to have the grass cut last week, I think. Either that, or we sent out a grass violation notice. So they're in various states of repair, but none of them are in pristine condition.
So when, when we say it's a safety issue, I mean, obviously, we talk about the residents, the neighbors, but to me, we're also talking about the police department who has to respond-
Yes.
-to vagrants living in it, or housing in it, or prostitutes, or whatever, doing whatever in it. We also have to worry about the fire department responding to it when somebody sets it on fire because they got a heater or something in there in the wintertime.
Yes, and we've had, you know, there have been a number of vacant buildings that we found to be not secured, that we, our staff have walked through, and you can see burn marks on the carpet and other things that could very easily become a fire, you know, in a bad situation.
Not to mention your staff as well.
Exactly. And we have had, you know, some of the buildings that we've demolished had been in, had been registered vacant, kind of in our administrative queue as dangerous, and then, for instance, 212 North Governor's Avenue several years ago, it was one that we had our eye on, and then people got in, and there was a fire. And again, in this area of the city, you have houses that are very close to each other, so it is a concern that if people get into a house and there's a fire, that you could be impacting not just that property, but other properties as well.
So, I'm sorry, just one last question. So if Dr. Burden has 33 properties, how many vacant properties do we have citywide?
380.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hutchinson.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. You said this home was a boarding house before?
Yes, it was.
How many people can live in a boarding house?
Um, yeah, again, it wasn't a legal boarding house, so there were a number of people living there that weren't related, that were coming and going, and it was through the neighbor complaints about the activity surrounding the house that we ultimately-
What would be the zoning of this house if it was rehabbed?
It's RG1, so it's permitted to be a single-family residence.
And not a boarding house?
And not a boarding house, and not apartments.
Councilman Sutherland.
Yes, what was the last correspondence with Dr. Joe Burden, Jr. in regards to the timeframe in which he would be, which he would complete the violations or the necessary corrective actions for the violations? And then there'd be another question following that.
Okay. The correspondence, there was correspondence sent-
The last correspondence.
On-
I mean, when he said that he would actually do something, or give you an indication-
Well, we sent something on July 17th.
Okay.
Letting, letting him know that it was scheduled to come before council this evening.
Did he contact you and let you know how close they were to actually finishing or curing the violations, or the defective conditions?
He did.
Do you know that date?
I don't. He's dealt primarily with our staff.
Okay.
I do have our code enforcement supervisor here, but I'm not sure that he has a specific date.
And my last question is, I understand that you mentioned he did provide a structural engineering report. Did a structural engineering report indicate that the condition of the dwelling was sound and structurally sound, or was it not structurally sound?
It is structurally sound.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Neal.
We, Dr. Burden was behind on taxes, I believe. Has he made any progress on the taxes that he owes to the city?
My understanding from the city manager is that he is current on his taxes at this point, except for the four properties with demolition liens that were discussed for transfer to Habitat at the Legislative Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions, your staff, before we go to public hearing?
One more question.
Councilman Lewis.
Are taxes due on this property?
I do not believe, I'm going to defer to Mr. Koenig, but-
Yeah, I believe Mr. Burden has paid FY16, or FY15 and FY16 taxes on all of his properties except the four that we talked about at 11th and 18th. So as far as I know, he's paid property taxes on this property, so he's current in property taxes.
I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? For the record, I'd like to note that on July, we received a letter on July 24th dated July 22nd from Mr. and Mrs. Rodney Baker concerning this property in favor of declaring this property dangerous. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak against declaring this property dangerous? For our records, if you could give us your name and address, that'd be so. Thank you.
How's everyone doing? Dr. Joe Burden, 385 State College Road. This correspondence is in, first of all, I would like to, first of all, indicate that it's still indicating that the property is owned by Joe Burden, Jr., and I just want to, again, reiterate the fact that I'm still in probate, so I think a better time would be, it's state representative, Joe Burden, Jr. Technically, the property is not owned, the probate is not closed yet. I do not know of any probate that remained open where somebody owned property. So, yes, I am responsible for the properties, but just to clarify the terminology. Also, to add to the fact that there may have been violations brought back to 16, 2016, but the property has recently transferred representation, or ownership, as you want to call it. So what has been addressed since that has occurred, since the death of my father has occurred, we have been proactively addressing and bringing the building into compliance with the 2009 International Building Code that is used by the city of Dover. I think that we had, we received two notice violations in regards to the May 26, May 26 council meeting. One was 742 Slaughter Street, and one was 128 South Queen Street. We were threatened at that time that if we did not take proactive measures to repair these properties, that this would be brought in front of the city council. We placed more attention, we got, we actually placed the attention- We placed more attention, we got, we actually placed the attention on 128, which is why that was not brought in front of the council for the May twenty-sixth meeting. And we placed, and at the May twenty-sixth meeting, as you, as you can recall, the 742 Slaughter Street was brought into attention where we had two facilities there. One, there was a shed that was in the back of a house that had to be a house, a one-bedroom house that had to be converted to a shed, which has since then been completed. We were given thirty days to, to complete that. And also, we are now in the process of making repairs to the primary residence, which is set in the front, 7242 A and B, as we knew it at that time. So, that's, I wanted to just bring all that to your attention to, to, to let you know that we were proactively making repairs to 128. We pulled a permit on April the twenty-fourth. And from my understanding, I'm looking at that permit today, that permit is good to September twenty-second of 2015. According to the Building International Code, in, in 2009, it indicates that incomplete building work is established after a hundred and twenty days of non-compliance to a building. We had an inspection around April, but we are still not within a hundred and twenty days of non-compliance of the building. When I received the letter from Anne Marie about 128, she indicated in the letter that because we had not had any correspondence with the city since April the twenty-fourth, that she would bring it before the city council. I ask, I beg, I pleaded that she did not do that, that we would be proactive, but she made it her, you know, business to bring this before the city council. But we were proactively, number one, we had two structural engineer reports completed. One where the structural engineer came out to the facility, did an inspection. We had to tear out a part of the building, we toured out. The city came out recently, most recently, July thirty-first. Mike McGregor came out and approved and put a yellow sticker in the window that said approve for the back structural. And that was done. And then, on Monday, August the third, from my understanding, Ron Coben came out and did an inspection as well. And we looked at the twenty-four items that were on the previous code violation list from 2013 that was performed by Tim Terrell, which was given to me in March of 2015. And from my understanding, we, we corrected and he approved fourteen of those twenty-four code violations. Since that time, and those other things were minor, since that time, those, those changes have, those code violations have been modified or corrected. I think that within the next week or so, we will be ready for a final inspection walkthrough.
Dr. Burden, can I, can I ask you, bring your comments to conclusion at this time and then we'll entertain any questions?
Okay, well, to make this real quick, I think that, that this is brought before the city council. I don't know if there's a retaliation or some type of retribution on behalf of Mrs. Townsend and in my, I don't know what's going on, but it seems like we're trying really hard to be, to stay in compliance with everything the city is asking us to do and we're receiving more and more pressure. For example, if you can just let me run down this list of things on what I think is going on here. On July fifteenth, we would, there was a letter that was placed on June seventeenth at 669 North Street, which is the next property that's coming up. And it says that we have to August the first to get a structural engineer report and give it to the city, if not, they will bring it up before the city council. We expedited this process, we went through a lot of trouble to get the structural engineer to come out to the property and also to type up a fourteen, fifteen-page extensive engineering report, puts a burden and a pressure on a lot of people. So, this was done, this was done.
Are you talking about the property right now that is in question or are you talking about the property that's on the next item?
Well, I'm talking about the next item, but I'm talking about what's happening here too in response to, if you, just give me a moment here, sir. So, I had correspondence with Anne Marie Townsend on July the fifteenth when she came back from vacation in regards to what was the delay for the building permit we submitted on July the second. It was now July the fifteenth, we did not get approval to work on the, the next property, 669. So, the next day, July the sixteenth, we went back and forth. We had correspondence about the whole process and how the building permit is done or what have you. The next day, on July the sixteenth, at eight oh six AM in the morning, I received an email from Anne Marie Townsend regarding, she drove past the work this morning and she drove past one of my properties and the grass was tall, which right down the street there is a property which was city-owned, it's three feet tall. At eleven thirty-seven AM, I received an email from Anne Marie Townsend saying that she just happened to be driving around today and she noticed that the structure at 742C, which was approved, because keep in mind, May twenty-sixth, we had thirty days to June twenty-sixth. And the inspection was done because June twenty-sixth fell on some weekend or something of that nature and the inspection was actually done the first weekend, July. And it was approved by city inspector, I think, Tim Terrell, one of, one of the inspectors. So, sixteen, seventeen days later, the same day, Anne Marie comes back and she says, oh, she notices that, that, that property did not, we were not finished with...
Dr. Burden, I need you to finish your comments at this time, okay?
Okay, so my comments are, I feel that I'm being targeted and harassed and this is continuous. Yes, the pictures that you saw in regards to 128, which, what it is, we've put a lot of time, dedication and commitment into that property. I do not feel that it's a dangerous building. I am in that community from sunup to sundown. If you are not in that community, you cannot say what's a dangerous building in that community. For the people that spend time in the City of Dover, who are actually trying to make the City of Dover a better place, they can tell you where the dangerous areas are in the City of Dover. So, I would ask the city council to take into consideration today that we are proactively making repairs to 128 South Queen Street. And I think that our repairs at this point are ninety to ninety-five percent complete. And I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Burden. Any questions? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. Please don't disappear, Mr. Burton.
Dr. Burton. Councilman Anderson has a question for you.
I have, Councilman Hare and I, and I both have a couple of questions. I, first of all, thank you for, I know that you were in a very tough spot and because not only the emotional loss and the, with your father passing, but all the financial difficulties. And I thank you for working with us, for getting the taxes up to date. And that's important to this because is it not true that one of the reasons why so many of the properties are vacant is because of clean hands? Previously, you could not get rental permits.
Yes, thank you.
So, so is it not true that we are now going to see progress and hopefully you make sure you do background checks? Because I don't wanna live next to people that you don't know who they are. That's the conversation I had with your father, with all due respect. And it's not true that, that we're gonna be seeing those vacancies declining very quickly in the next six months?
Yes, we are proactively sticking to our agenda of having the Kirkwood Street project, the Queen Street project and so forth. We're working alongside with Habitat currently on selling property for a dollar to Habitat. And we'd like to thank Habitat for working with us to alleviate some previous, you know, debt that we also had as well, so...
Thank you for selling those four properties. One, another question is, could it be that, could it be that we're looking, that Mrs. Townsend with, has been, having been given instructions by this council, do the citizen complaints that mainly, that it's not targeting anyone, but could it be that just because of the breadth of exposure, that it may seem like that when she's trying to, you know, when she's trying to close the door on these hundreds of vacant properties, many of which, like this letter, people were concerned about in the past, prostitution, drug use, et cetera?
Right. Yes, and, and that's not to discredit Ms. Townsend anyway. She has an obligation to the City of Dover and, and you know, we, we respect her for what she does. But my, my only, you know, dilemma with that whole scenario is when we, we visibly see other, other areas that have the same issues and we take pictures and we say, well, hey, wait a minute, we just got a fire for this grass, but this grass over here is, you know, we just, we just wanna ensure, you know, equality across the board and make sure that we not, we don't feel, we shouldn't have to feel like we're being targeted. And sometimes, I guess, when you're out in the field and you see these things and you sit behind a closed door in the office building on the computer, you don't see these things.
Thank you, Dr. Burden. Councilman Sutler.
First of all, I'd say thank you, Dr. Burden, for satisfying your taxes. It does help out the City of Dover and decreases the burden for all the taxpayers for the City of Dover when it comes to assessment. So, would you say, with you saying that within one week, you should be able to satisfy or cure the defective conditions of that unit, correct?
Well, yes, within one week, we can, we'll call back out for another inspection. From my understanding, we have to have the certificate of occupancy for that building, so we have not put appliances in that building yet. I don't do that until the end because they're a walk in that area.
So...
That's when we would have people breaking into the house. Right now, we don't have that issue, but once you start putting appliances in the house before, you're, you're able, and then now it changes our whole ballgame. As you said, we're, we're freed of the clean hands ordinance.
Right.
So, you know, we, we hopefully would like to, within the next month, get that place rented to a good family section eight.
So, with that, with that being said, if we go ahead and, and approve staff recommendations for within thirty days, you should be okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burden.
Thank you.
Councilman Hare and then Councilman Hosfield.
I think Councilman Sutler just hit, you said that building was ninety to ninety-five percent complete on 128 South Queen Street. That's what you said.
Yes, sir.
So, within thirty days, you should be able to have it completed. And I don't think there's a requirement that it has to have a stove and refrigerator in it to pass inspection.
I don't know, the building code, sometimes, I don't know, do I, do I have to have that?
You will to get a certificate of occupancy, but, but, you know, again, if, if all of the defects are, are addressed, if the siding is as it should be, if the, the floor coverings are intact and clean and, and all of the structural repairs are made, you know, again, we can hold the CO until you have a tenant ready, but we, you know, we can pretty much get it off the dangerous building list.
Well, our intention is because, you know, we're trying to play catch-up financially from, you know, catching up with the, and then also, at the same time, having the last three or four months not being able to rent properties. We are behind and those thirty-three odd properties that you were talking about, I know for, for a fact that we renovated fifteen of those and we have them, we had in March before the Clean Hands Act was enforced, we had all of those from Section Eight ready and everything, but the Clean Hands Act was in force, so we couldn't pull rental permits. So, therefore, we lost all of those, all of that income, all of those months, sir. So, that's, that's, that's where we are right now.
Thank you. Councilman Hosfield.
I guess I have a question for the city manager and then maybe a statement for Mr. Burden. Going back to our Legan-Finn meeting.
Yes.
We're looking at a thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollar loss. Who would be responsible for that money if we were, is that money owed to us by Dr. Burden?
So, yes, the, currently, there is about sixty-six thousand dollars worth of liens on those properties we discussed.
For point of clarification, we're talking about a different set of properties.
Agreed. I understand that.
Yeah, there were four properties which are different from the ones we're considering tonight, that there's about sixty-six thousand dollars of demolition-related liens. The, the recommendation at the committee level was to allow the property transfer to Habitat. At, they have a, they have a proposed sales contract. And the liens would transfer to Habitat through no objection to us. Then Habitat would pay us about thirty thousand dollars and the balance of the lien would be forgiven. If that transaction does not happen, then we would have to compel a sheriff's sale, most likely, on the properties. And if there's additional administrative burdens and time and all that stuff, the city may likely own those properties if Mr. Burden does not satisfy those liens.
Okay. Thank you. I guess the reason I asked that, well, the reason I did ask that, I take exception, Dr. Burden, I take exception to your targeted and harassed. If we were targeting and harassing you, then we, wait, let me finish. Then we wouldn't be willing as a city to accept a thirty-six thousand dollar loss on money that you owe us. So, to sit here and say that city staff is targeting and harassing you is unfair and not appropriate and not even close to being true.
You, you don't, you don't live the life, you don't, you, you can't walk my, you, you, first of all, you're not my skin color, so you can't speak on that. Or you can say what you feel, but I receive the fifteen certified letters from the city every day.
Thanks, Dr. Burden.
Little minor stuff. I receive the code violations in regards to, I have to cement, I can't put downstairs and driveways and it's been like that for the last thirty years. Yeah, I'm on the other end, I'm on the receiving end. I, I can't tell you as a grown man what you, what you've been harassed for, sir. I can't speak on that because I don't live your skin, I'm not in your body.
We're gonna limit our comments to what...
That's not fair for him to make that justification.
I appreciate it.
That's not fair. I know what targeted means.
My, my main concern is that, you know, I understand, I don't think that the city is, is per se, city councils per se, targeting you. I'm not saying who is or who is not.
I don't say city councils.
But what I'm, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, you know, that, that topic right there was out of order. We are not discussing those properties and I felt like that whole conversation was, was out of order. I understand what you're saying, Councilman Hosfield.
It goes to the great, it goes to the entire picture.
Right, but when it comes to the point of order and how we do things, that, that should not have been allowed.
I appreciate what you're saying, Councilman, for the record.
But the thing is, who's the say of that?
Excuse me, Dr. Burden, please. Excuse me, Dr. Burden, all right? I, I thought about what you were saying, but at the same time, liens can transfer from property to property.
Right, but we're, but we're only discussing...
So, it was perfectly within the bounds of this discussion to talk about tax burdens of one person across the properties that they own. Councilman Sutler, continue.
Like I said, for the record, I felt that was out of order, whether it's intentional or non-intentional, for the record, like I said, it's out of order. But, you know, I, I don't wanna see this kind of, whether it's whoever it is, I think that the city, we really need to work together with our residents, our taxpayers. I think that Mr. Burden showed good faith in dealing business by, you know, satisfying the taxes. It's a lot of money, how many, how much was owed? A hundred and ten thousand or a hundred, or he paid at least eighty thousand dollars? And, you know, I don't know who has eighty thousand dollars in their bank account to pay taxes, but I think that he showed a tremendous good faith effort. And, you know, I personally, as a city council person, I'm not targeting you. I don't think that Anne Marie Townsend or city manager or anyone's targeting you per se. I do believe that we have a job to do. It could be viewed that way. Even I have been subjected to violations as a landlord that I had to deal with as a fire marshal and a councilman. But I think that we need to cool it down with who's doing what and let's just work together for the betterment of the City of Dover because that's what it's all about. You know, either you're gonna pay your taxes or you're not, either you're gonna be in compliance or you're not. And, you know, we, I, I think it's getting a little too emotional here and I'm just saying I'm at a dismay with that because I don't think that that's what we're all about.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. Thank you, Dr. Burden. We've heard from...
Can I make one statement? Can I make one comment?
We've, we've discussed this enough. We've heard from council, you've had your questions, is there a motion that anyone?
I move...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Was there anyone else who wanted to come forward and speak against this? So, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilman Sutler.
I move to, to accept staff recommendation, to give Dr. Burden thirty days either to resolve or correct the defective conditions within the unit or move forward with staff recommendation.
Second, questions that made by Councilman Sutler and seconded by Councilman Neal to accept staff recommendation. Any further discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Just a quick statement, I will be voting no on this for the reasons that discussed because in general, I only vote for demolition when I believe that the building is dangerous and it does not reach that level. It is currently under repair and the pictures I've seen left me unconvinced, but it's no offense to anyone or staff.
Any further comments? Councilman Sutler.
I'm voting to recommend staff recommendation because I feel as though that Dr. Burden can have these, the defective conditions cured within the one week, seven days, and I think thirty days is more than... I think thirty days is, uh, more than adequate, being a contractor myself and looking at the defective conditions, and I think that that will satisfy, um, both parties, the city and Dr. Burden himself.
Councilman Hare.
Just to follow up on that, and I'm voting in favor of the recommendation, because as Ms. Councilman Sutter said, Dr. Burden said, "That's fine. He could have it fixed in, in plenty of time." So I'm taking the man at his word, so I'm voting with what Dr. Burden told me.
Other comments? Adam Clark, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Sutter?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Housefelt?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, motion passes eight to one. Item number four is a public hearing on violation of the dangerous building ordinance of the property located at six sixty-nine West North Street, owned by Joe W. Burden Jr. Request Mrs. Townsend to brief us on the item.
Thank you. Before I go into the, the details of the PowerPoint, I, I guess I do wanna set the context a little bit about code enforcement, in particular in this area. Um, I believe all of you are aware that the city of Dover received what I would call the coveted downtown development district designation from the state, um, through the leadership of NCO, a number of stakeholders, including, um, Mr. Sutter, Chief Burnett, um, and other representatives of the city, but most importantly, the stakeholders and people who live in our downtown neighborhoods have been part of the Restoring Central Dover Plan, which, um, Councilman Housefelt mentioned is, he, um, was one of the original members of the steering committee. Um, we have been through a process, we have been working very hard to turn things around and to really change the dynamics, and i- if you've heard me give presentations about the downtown development district, you've heard me say, "The stars are aligned and will never be aligned this way again. We need to take advantage of this opportunity." Um, NCO, Milford Housing Development Corporation, and Habitat for Humanity have made a significant commitment to our downtown by taking an even smaller area than the Restoring Central Dover area and the downtown development district, and decided they were gonna really focus on making a big impact by introducing a lot of new homes for homeownership, and we're supporting that through our CDBG program. Part of what Restoring Central Dover has in its recommendation is tough code enforcement. There's a focus on safety, and council, for a number of years, has told us we need to be tough in code enforcement. So I'm gonna tell you right now that we cannot be tough in code enforcement and allow some of these properties to continue to exist in the condition they're in, because some of these properties, many of them, unfortunately, a number of the properties owned by Dr. Burden are things that can deter a homeowner from wanting to buy a house on that block, whether it's Habitat, whether it's one of the other partners such as NCO or Milford Housing, or whether it's a private builder. That is why I'm bringing these things forward. What, when, when I drive around the downtown, which I do frequently, and I see properties that are boarded up in various states of disrepair, and I see that they're right next to lots that we're trying to focus homeownership, I know that if we do not stand by the code enforcement side of it, that we're not gonna have success on the other side. So I, I wanted to set that context, that this comes right out of the planning that we've done for the downtown, that includes the stakeholders, that includes the people who own the property and live in the downtown.
Mrs. Townsend, thank you for the context. Now, we're all gonna pivot and talk about this property.
I know, but I, I, I know where we're gonna get, so.
Thank you.
Six sixty-nine West North Street. This is property that is, if you go across the railroad tracks on North Street, it is just past the Kids Inc. daycare center, just before you get to Clarence Street. Um, on this property, we have had seventeen code enforcement cases, you know, flaking, paint, wall siding, junk debris, grass violations. Um, honestly, I think it's one of the properties that, you know, you, you drive by enough that you, you don't even notice it until you start really looking and, and saying, "Okay, code enforcement, we really need to be strong on this," because it's been in poor repair for a long time. The utilities were terminated in February of two thousand and twelve. The building was registered as vacant in two thousand and fifteen. City staff inspected the exterior on April ninth of two thousand and fifteen and requested a structural engineering report. Um, the, the rear east corner of the foundation was settling and causing, um, the, the siding to buckle. So they did provide a, a structural engineering report. Um, it is a, a very lengthy report, it is six pages of text. Um, there are areas where they suggest that portions of the structure, um, should be demolished and rebuilt. So it is, it is extensive, the, the issues with this property. We're bringing it forward as being unfit for habitation, it's a general welfare issue, code enforcement violations, and it's an unoccupied building. This is a front view, and I'm gonna get into, uh, part of the, the reason we're bringing this forward now is not because they were not making the repairs, um, it, it's actually the nature of the repairs that are being made and, and the, the quality of the repairs. If you look at this view, you can see the front porch, um, which has been rebuilt. That work started prior to obtaining a building permit. We placed a stop work order, the building permit was obtained. Um, this is the one that Dr. Burden had mentioned, the permit was turned in, and I was on vacation, and I needed to review it, so it wasn't until I returned from vacation that, that it was approved. Um, the, the work started, and it, it had only been about a week into, um, the time since the permit was issued, and our building inspector was driving by and noticed framing in the back, and we had not had any inspections scheduled. And the way that the sequencing of inspections go, goes, you dig your footers, you have them inspected to make sure they're at the proper depth, then you pour the footers, and then you frame up from there. So when there's framing going on and we haven't had a footer inspection, um, he stopped and, and talked to the contractor on site. So there are a number of things that I will show you that are specific. Um, the decking and the joists on this, um, on the porch run the same direction. So in construction, your joists run one way, and the, the decking runs perpendicular to that. That's how you get your structural support. So when the inspector went out, the decking and the joists are running the same way. Um, there was nothing fastening the framing to the foundation. The posts that are installed on the front of the porch are sitting on the decking, they're not sitting on the structural support. The header is not the proper size, and it's not fastened to po- to posts correctly. The plywood on the, the roof of the, I think you can see it in another picture, um, runs beyond the, the structural support for the roof, um, and has been shingled. The ledger board is not properly bolted to the house. So everything that has been done in terms of repairs to this porch has been done not in accordance with the building code requirements and not in a way that is structurally compatible or structurally sound. So, um, this, you can see this here, this is where it attaches to the, the house, and it is attached with nails. Um, nails pull away, nails are not to be used for fastening things that are structural.
That's true.
Um, here you can see the back. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we're seeing back here. Um, again, you can see, you know, the, the back portion there has been taken off. Um, again, they're into the framing at this point. Um, you've got, it, again, this is one where the footers are not to the proper depth, the footers are at ten inches, which means that they're not below the frost line, they're required to be twenty-four inches. That is a basic building code, you know, if you're building a deck. If it's not done, it will heave, it will separate. Um, according to the, the contractor that was doing the work, he indicated that there were tree roots interfering, so we couldn't deep, deep, dig deeper. So again, if there's tree roots, then that's another thing that can cause, um, the structure to not stay sound. So you've got, um, the, the floor supports are not bolted to the house, so it's not connected to the existing structure. You can see here and in this one where, um, there, the framing for the wall is not sitting on the support, it's sitting adjacent to it, kind of airborne a little bit. Um, there's, and, that's another shot of that. There's no crawl space, so there's no way to insulate it. Um, again, everything that has been done in terms of structural repair to this building has not been done in a code compliant way. When our inspector went out, he placed a stop work order, he left a two-page field correction notice that ultimately just simply indicated, you know, it went through the, the issues that I mentioned, but stated that we needed to have, um, drawings stamped by an architect in order to be able to proceed, because he was working off of the structural engineering report, and that doesn't have the same type of details as drawing, and not, none of the work that was done was done to code, which concerns me not only about this, but about the other properties as well, because you have the same person working on the properties. In this case, because of the structural issues in, and in the, in this case, the, the quality of the work that was being done, our staff recommendation is to declare the building and any accessory structures, which actually there aren't any on this property, dangerous, um, to order the property to be demolished by September tenth by the owner, and if not, to have the city demolish it and then recover the cost. In this, in this case, because of the issues that we found on the field inspection, um, our recommendation is not to have the property owner repair or demolish, it is simply to, um, require demolition, so.
Questions for Mrs. Townsend. Councilman Sutter.
Was there an engineer report, um, provided, uh, by Dr. Burden in regards to whether or not it was structurally sound? And also, um, when he put in for the permit for the deck, was it supposed to be a freestanding deck, not connected to the building, or an attachment deck?
It's not a deck. Um, it, it's actually a framed portion of the house, so it is supposed to be, the structural engineering report gives details about what needs to be removed, what needs to be built, but it doesn't have the drawings. So, you know, most contractors know, I mean, it, the, the issues are basic issues of how you, how you frame, how you dig your footers, how you pour your footers.
Right, the engineer, engineer report.
The engineering report does not go into that level of detail.
It didn't?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other question for Mrs. Townsend, Mr. Councilman Neal.
Uh, will, uh, e- even if this is demolished, Dr. Burden will still own that property?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mrs. Townsend? Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. I'm gonna declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against declaring this property dangerous? Anyone who'd like to speak against declaring this property dangerous? Dr. Burden, just for the record, if you can state your name, so we have it in the, in the recording. Thank you.
Dr. Joe Burden Jr.
I can start the timer, thank you.
Thank you. I'm here just to speak in regards against the demolition of six sixty-nine. Um, again, this is a building that we received a notice on June seventeenth on the door, front door, stating that we had two weeks to get a structural engineer report. Uh, we did so, we did, we did so, I submitted their, building, I submitted the structural engineer report for, um, in order to receive the building permit on July second. Um, when, normally we get the build, normally we get approval for a building permit. Um, within a week's time, I noticed that, a week went by, I called, and they said, um, that everything stops when Anne Marie Townsend's on vacation. So I think that's something that we should, you know, bring into the discussion, as she, as, as she indicated, that when she's on vacation, city, I mean, city business still should operate. I, I, I'm, I'm on the assumption that no one, no one person should hold up any process. Uh, people have deadline dates that they need to meet, so, um, the one thing that all of this comes into play, um, is I sent several emails to Anne Marie, and I asked her what the delay was, and we had some correspondence on July the fifteenth, and, um, to make a long story short, in regards to that property, um, we're human, we all make mistakes. Um, if you have any questions about the work that we do, um, you could, you feel free to come out. Um, there were not nails that were put in, there were screws, and the screw, and, and the building was, um, attached to the side of the building. Anne Marie, from my understanding, um, came in a van ten minutes after the inspector was there and jumped out the van, and, um, said, "Hey, what did we get?" And he said that I stopped work, and she said, "Great, all right, we're gonna bring this up in front of the council." So I don't know if you had a chance to walk around to the side of the building yourself and do an inspection on, on what was attached or what was not. You made statements that, um, a side of the, the, um, bit, the side of the, the, something was not attached when you went through your presentation a few minutes ago, and I don't think that that was accurate. I think that what happened was, uh, my contractor used, um, the wrong type of screws, he was supposed to use lac screws instead of using the, the twine screws that he used, which is code, lac screws are code. Um, he did not use the, the appropriate screws. We asked if that property could be remedied and we could continue work on the, on the property.
Dr. Burden, you have about thirty seconds left in your lot.
Okay, we, we asked if we could continue work on that property. We were told no, um, that we would have to get a, um, draw, a, a drawn-out detail. The struc- the structural engineer report is very detailed, it does list, um, how deep footers should be, it lists everything, word for word, fourteen pages. I wish we had a copy here that you could all review, you would see this, and I have a letter here from the structural engineer indicating, um, it is my understanding that in inspection of some of your properties by the city, um, well.
Thank you, Dr. Burden.
I'm on time limit, so.
Are there any questions for Dr. Burden?
But pretty much, what, what I was saying is that.
Dr. Burden, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Burden? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, what was the result of the structural engineer report that you have?
Um, what, what happened, um, was the structure, the first time the, the structural engineer came out on June the twenty-fourth, we had to tear floors out and remove parts of the house. We did that, and we started, um, we dug the footers, um, for the front porch, and we did everything for the front porch. We, he said that the front porch had to, um, be demolished, we demolished the front porch, and we dug the footers, he came back out on Ju- June the twenty-ninth, and he inspected the front porch to make sure, um, that that was done appropriately. We, we went ahead with that and start pulling footers, which is my mistake, because we did not actually receive the, um, the, the, the building permit at that point, so they came out and they put a stop work. We stopped work until we actually got a permit on the fifteenth, we finished the porch. It was all in, the, and structural engineer came back out and re-inspect after we finished the front porch, and said that everything was structurally sound. The one thing that he indicates in his letter is that he does not indicate to us code, so it, it was our, it was our business to make, have a meeting with him, where he gave us a copy of the building code, and he went over the type of screws and everything that we're supposed to use for the job.
All right.
I have a report here that indicates.
Satisfied with your answer.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, the, uh, next question is, uh, is the only one that really matters. Uh, what is your alternative plan to staff recommendation?
My alternative plan to staffing recommendations, number one, we have been stagnated from getting a.
Could you, could you please, uh, just focus on telling me what your view is to make this right inhabitable, or what's your alternative to the staff recommendation with timeframe? Otherwise, it doesn't really matter.
And that, and that's what I was.
Even an amateur like me can see that this isn't workable. Okay, sir.
Thank you. Um, and, and I, 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 I was trying to. Um, and, and I, I, I was trying to answer your question and I was saying, um, we have been stagnated in making, in having progress on continuing with the building permit because from my understanding, it is required that we get, um, sealed drawings from the structural engineer. Ann Marie called the structural engineer several times to question him about, um, um, what he's been doing at the, at our properties when he does inspections.
Mr. President, uh, there must be a, there must be a misunderstanding of my question because I think my, my, my question is, was only what, wasn't about the Mrs. Townsend or structural, it was about what, that this recommendation is to demolish the building. My, my question, maybe I'm not phrasing it right, maybe you can clarify.
I understood it perfectly.
Because I'm not getting any, the answer to this. Uh, maybe, maybe someone else can ask it.
Are you, are you, I'm going to go after him.
Councilman Hare. On the last property, you said you were 90, 95% complete and within 30 days you said you could have it, or within two weeks you said you could have it all done and up to code. Where are you on this property? How, what percent you have done, uh?
I, I was.
What percentage are you done work on this property? That's all, that's question one.
Okay, let me, let me do, let me, let me do the math. Let me, can I get a, can I get a second to see what percentage I'm, because I, I don't, I have to do the math real quick.
Ballpark it.
I would say, let me see, 14-page report. Um, me personally, we have the building permit for four days and they put a stop work on the house, so I would say that right now we would be about, um, 30% of the way, because there's three major things. There's the porch, the front porch, which had to be rebuilt. There was the room addition, which you saw in the video, and there was an interior floor, which we have to, um, put in an additional pier, and we have to call the city back out for an inspection so that they can see that it's 24 inches deep. And we also have to get a structural report. So the reason why I was doing all of that is I don't know how long, because I don't know how long it's going to take for a stru, um, engineer to come in and, and provide the city with drawings. That takes time to do that, so it would probably take close to 30 days for him to come back out. And, and what I was trying to say is I have a letter here from the engineer stating that he, he had, um, conversation with Ann Marie Townsend and, and he, and he elaborated that he didn't feel that, um, that sealed drawings would be any different than the 14 extensive page report that we have now, but it, that it was our obligation and our responsibility to make sure that, that we're in compliance and we use the appropriate materials that we were supposed to use in regards to making the repairs. And we all make mistakes, sir, and all I asked was that we remedy our mistake. So, um, to answer your question, in addition, plus, how mu, how much every time did it would take for us to get a structure, um, the structural engineer to come out for a third time and to do drawings of what we need to do versus us just complying to code? Um, and like I said, we've already had this discussion with him. So if we could have been allowed to do the work right away, I would say, um, 90 days. If, if this is something that we have to wait for the structural engineer to do, I would say, I would ask that I be given 120 days.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Burden.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Sutherland?
Um, it's just basically a statement to, uh, Dr. Burden, it's fine. As a builder myself and looking at, you know, some of the pictures from that front porch, not only would I recommend that you get a decking book to show you the metal fasteners, but, um, the floor joist hangers were not properly installed when I saw. Um, the metal fasteners, uh, should not have screws. It should have 10 or 16 D nails on the metal fasteners, which you bang in with a hammer, which were not present. And the install, the floor joists, um, were not properly, uh, installed as well. And being a builder, I cannot consciously say that that deck is a sound structure. Um, so I just want to say for the, for the record and the future, that, you know, you might want to educate yourself a little bit more about, you know, um, the construction of, of, doing construction, decking, whatever you're going to do, even though you might not be a contractor yourself, if you're going to have people working for you, at least you'll know exactly what to look for so that when you're in a situation like this, um, you know, you won't be in a situation like this. And, and to properly know how, I don't know if you do, but to properly know how to read the engineer's report so that, um, you won't be in this predicament of such and this one. But having said that, I cannot vote, um, in favor of, um, not supporting staff's recommendation for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burden. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak against the property being declared dangerous? Seeing no one, we'll declare the hearing closed. Thank you. It's a pleasure of counsel.
I'd like to make a motion.
Councilman Hausfeld?
I'd like to make a motion, we declare, follow staff's recommendations, declare this building and all accessory structures on this property dangerous and order the property due to be demolished by September 10th, 2015.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Hausfeld, second by Councilman Neal. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutherland?
Yes.
For Neal?
Yes.
For Lewis?
Yes.
For Cole?
Yes.
For Hausfeld?
Yes.
For Hare?
Yes.
For Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes 9-0. Item number five, we have been notified of Mayor Robin R. Christensen's veto of the motion adopted by City Council on July 27th, 2015, to affirm City Council's decision of March 23rd to 2015 to move the Economic Development Office under the city manager, with the understanding that this matter will be revisited in September, which could lead to a different action. We were also recipients of a privileged, attorney-client privileged, um, legal opinion on this matter, which stated, uh, the effect of the, of the veto. It was a pleasure of counsel. Uh, Councilman Anderson and then Councilman Sutherland.
Thank you. Uh, question, Mr. President. If I, if I, uh, we, we have so few vetoes that it's, it's been actually at least two years, I think. Uh, what, what is the proper form to, uh, for, to put a motion, uh, in place for this? Because it, it has to be an override, it takes two-thirds, um, because, I mean, is that what, what we do? So that those of us who may favor the veto vote no, and the ones who favor overriding it would vote yes? Is that, I just want to know what the, what the proper, is that the proper way to do it?
I believe it's cleaner than that. I think it's just a motion to override the veto with a yes vote, meaning the vote to override the veto.
Great.
Mr. Pepper's recommendation.
Yeah, or accept the recommendation of legal counsel, which is that the veto stand because it has no bearing on the actions that took place on.
Right.
Yeah, that's all we need to, that's all we need to do.
Councilman Sutherland?
I, what we sent? I think, I think, the, well, the veto, from what I've heard from Mr. Pepper, there isn't a veto because the veto had to be done within seven days of March 23rd. So there's really no action we even need to take on this. Am I right, Mr. Rodriguez?
I think, uh, that is correct. I, I would just recommend if, if councils, uh, sees it that way, is to accept, uh, Mr. Pepper's recommendation, and that would take care of it. But you are correct, the veto was too late.
Right.
Well, well, if that's the case, then why is this on the agenda?
Councilman Lewis, uh, it's on the agenda because when we formally receive a veto, we have to communicate.
Okay. I mean, I, I just want to know how much longer we're in a tinker with this change in government. I mean, this has been going on for a long time now.
At the last meeting, which I believe you weren't in attendance, we decided on September 16th there'd be a special meeting of council to deal with.
I, I saw the email, so we'll all have the opportunity to discuss how we feel about it.
Correct. And I, I know others, myself included, share your frustration with this. Councilman Neal?
Yeah, I, basically, I think the discussion tonight certainly is moot, uh, in that, that there were five of us who were not elected to this body when those decisions were made. And that I think that, uh, as Ms. Denny had mentioned earlier, that there, there's a lot of consideration that has to be done, that we need, need to go out and do the work and think about this and maybe solicit, uh, our constituents.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we will meet on September 15th to consider it. So if this case, if we don't have to do anything, uh, we wouldn't. If not, I would suggest a table.
No, no, procedurally, we want to table the item. Councilman Anderson?
Uh, no. I, um, we, we have to have a motion, uh, one way or the other. Uh, so I, I move that we accept the.
Hang on one second, I'll, I'll answer that question before you.
Well, I think it would be good to accept Mr. Pepper's.
Anyway, the motion that's going to make, Mr. President, I move that we accept the, the, uh, the legal recommendation of Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Anderson, second by Councilman Hare to accept the legal, uh, legal interpretation presented by Mr. Pepper. Any further discussion?
There, there is a quick one, and that is, I, I believe that this veto should have been made, but it should have been made in March. I would have definitely supported it because, uh, there's been substantial progress with the Economic Development Department since it was relocated under the mayor. The goals have started being met, the unemployment has gone down, business startups have gone up, the, the industrial park has been better managed. Uh, it, it has been a successful project because of the focus that has come down. Um, I think it, it was a mistake, if it was a mistake at the time, I think it is now, and I would love to sustain the veto, but I agree with the legal opinion.
Councilman Sutherland?
Just like to say for the record, I concur with Councilman Anderson.
Councilman Lewis?
I also concur, but, uh, I have a question. Um, you know, being a new council representative and all, uh, I wasn't at the, uh, March 25th meeting as a, as a council representative, and I'd just like to know, um, why did the council take away the economic development from the auspices of the mayor? Can, can somebody answer that question?
Hey, gentlemen.
Or do you want to wait until September and?
Took, took away everything's debate again.
You, you might review the minutes of those meetings, we certainly talk offline about it. It, it was not a unanimous vote of counsel.
Okay.
Does anyone want to add anything to that?
September 16th would be the day of the vote.
So I'll get an explanation then by someone?
If not before.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
If not before.
That's fair.
Okay. All right, the motion that's before us then is Councilman Anderson's motion to accept the, uh, recommendation of Mr. Pepper. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Go to item number 10, a revised proposal for disposition of city-owned land property located at 24. Councilman Anderson asked for item number nine to be brought off the Consent Agenda Quarterly Review of the Capital Investment Plan, CIP, for April, May, and June. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. It's, uh, in other times in the past, I've asked this item be removed from Consent Agenda because I believe it's very important that we, as the council and the public, understand what is happening with the major projects, if they're on budget, if they're, if they're on time, and, uh, you know, just because it's very important that the public understands what's happening with 30-some million dollars of their money. Uh, so I, I'd just like a quick summary, please.
Tony?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, in the report, uh, the report tracks all of our general fund, uh, as well as our water, sewer, and electric fund projects. And, uh, just as a general summary, uh, I think the staff has done a very good job over the last couple of years of catching up a very large backlog of projects. Um, the street program projects are, are catching up. Uh, we've closed out a number of community transportation fund projects. Uh, we've been able to work on several partnership projects, including the Inter-City Cultural League and the Solid Rock Baptist Church, improvements related to community transportation funds. And, uh, as you can see in the report, there are a number of items that are marked as complete. There may still be some closeout items related to paperwork to finish up contracts, but the construction is complete. A number of the projects where it says they're in progress, uh, some of them could be vehicle deliveries that, or equipment deliveries that spanned, uh, over the fiscal year because of a delay, uh, in the ordering or, or excess time, uh, related to the vendor preparing the equipment for delivery. Uh, we also have in progress a number of multi-year projects, uh, that will show up in the, in the capital plan, so they may have intended to be, um, three or four years long. As we move through the, the, uh, summary, as far as the Garrison Oak project is concerned, at the utility committee level, we talk about this in a, in a general perspective, but , uh, the general, the Garrison Oak projects are winding down. There's really four related projects. Uh, that is, one is the street and drainage construction, uh, the water system construction out there, sanitary sewer and pump station construction out there, and then, um, the water tower construction. And the final project was the 69 KV line relocation. If you drive out there, excuse me, a number of those projects are coming to completion. Uh, there's been some delays, but we expect all those projects to wrap up this calendar year. Some of them will be wrapping up towards the end of summer, or final closure of the projects. So a large part of the capital spending, uh, there was a, there was a steep incline in capital spending related to the technical part. Uh, that construction is now winding down. On the electric side, uh, on, on the public work side, we finished the construction of an, of a large production well for the city. We've done some I and I projects that affected a number of residential subdivisions within the community, and then we'll be supplementing those projects, uh, related to I and I with, with paving of the streets in the future. On the electric side, uh, the Horse Pond Road Substation Project, uh, which we had some difficulty getting finished, it's now wrapped up. Uh, it actually came in under the revised budget. Uh, we're working on a large upgrade of the electric system related to the Energizer expansion, uh, as you run through the center city. And a project that had been lagging as far as the General, the General Scott switchgear is moving forward this year to kind of, uh, finish up some of the large backlog that we've had in some of the areas. So I think staff, as I said, has done a very good job of moving these projects forward. I think, uh, a number of them, the, the budget management issues have been improved. There's always some challenges with our capital project spending because we can't re-determine what the bidders will, will put in for, for numbers. But they've made a lot of progress at the staff level, very proud of them, and I think that this pro, this, uh, report shows the progress that we've made over the last 12 months, uh, related to capital project delivery.
And, Miss Conning, if I may, you should be proud of the staff. We've, uh, uh, had some pointed criticisms, uh, sometime when, when it came to bidding, and to see the progress that's been made, something that I, I felt that should also be just as public. And, uh, and, uh, just to let, just to say, uh, there's been real reform and, and real progress, and congratulations on that. And now, the fire radios, do you know when they're coming in?
Um, I think the equipment delivery is expected shortly.
The fire radios are in. We're waiting on our new air packs.
The air packs.
Air packs?
Yeah, and they should be in, I was given two weeks, and that was before I left for vacation. So they should be here anytime. The holdup was, then, it's a brand-new air pack that was built, so a lot of the bigger cities took precedence over the city of Dover.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Conning. Any other questions for Mr. Conning? Item number 10 is a revised proposal for disposition of city-owned land property located at 24 North New Street. I ask, Mr. Conning, please brief us on this.
Uh, thank you, Council President. In June, specifically Monday, June 22nd, the city council accepted a recommendation out of the city's manager's office to declare three properties as access, 16 South Queen Street, 18 South Queen Street, and 24 North New Street. We had, uh, in the packet, a, uh, an offer to purchase all three properties from Central Delaware Habitat for Humanity. The city manager's recommendation was to, uh, negotiate final prices on 16 and 18 South Queen Street with the Central Delaware Habitat for Humanity, and then, uh, put 24 North New Street on the open market for bidding. Shortly after that meeting, uh, my office and the Central Delaware. Shortly after that meeting, my office and the Central Delaware agreed to an increased price for sixteen and eighteen of sixty-six hundred dollars per lot. And then there was a subsequent meeting with several board members of Habitat, as well as city staff, to discuss the overall comprehensive strategy of Habitat, the partnership with the Endcall, as well as, I'm missing the third one, Milford Housing Development Corporation. And in that meeting, Habitat convinced me that it would probably not be in our best interest to pursue an open market bid for twenty-four North New Street. And there's some supporting documentation in the packet regarding a letter from Habitat, but the general theme of this is that Habitat has secured, I believe it's four other properties on North New Street, and they have the ability to make a significant impact in homeownership on North New Street in this block. So, I'm requesting that council revisit my recommendation and allow the transfer of twenty-four North New Street from the city of Dover to Habitat for Humanity, Central Delaware Habitat for Humanity. They will pay us a ten thousand, five hundred dollars for the lot, which is an increase from the previous five thousand dollars, and then we will write off the balance of the lien, which would create a write-off of twenty-five thousand, four hundred, eight dollars and forty-six cents. However, I do believe that this property transfer would help us meet the goals of homeownership, as well as the revitalization in this portion of the downtown development district. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Sutherland.
Two-part question. Who, one, who was the previous owner, before we became owner?
Mary Bessie Brockenbrow.
Okay. My second, my second question, actually, it's just a statement. When we go to sell or revitalize downtown, thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-four, I believe North or South New Street, which is adjacent to Fulton and Queen, Fulton and New Street, that area there is, like, really trashy. And I begin a lot of concerns with my constituents, so when we go to sell, I think that we might want to, you know, do a walk-through, or, you know, try to also clean up, you know, a little bit, before we try to, you know, sell that unit, so we can get the most. As Councilman Hare wants to get the bang for our buck, because it's really looking bad on that street, Fulton and New Street. And Mount Zion Amy Church, my church, has complained. We did a community fair this weekend. We spent over an hour and a half just cleaning it up, and I did call, you know, Public Works earlier that week, you know, but it's getting really bad. It's like it's Little Philly, just on that area, you know, like you're going to Philadelphia. And then even Main New Street, where all the activity in the past has been, is not even that trashy. So, I would just make a suggestion that, you know, when we go to sell these units that we, or properties that we own, that we also try and clean up the area, not just because we're selling it, but in general, because it does affect the downtown revitalization efforts, you know. So, just those suggestions. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from members of the council? It's the pleasure of council.
To accept staff recommendations.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Hare, and seconded by Councilman Anderson, to accept staff recommendations. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutherland?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries nine, zero. Item number twelve, Councilman Lewis asked to be taken off Consent Agenda, it's the reassignment of Planning Commission District Representation. Bobby Jones, term to expire June twenty-seventeen, from First District to at-large, and Kathleen Still, term to expire June twenty-sixteen, from at-large to First District. Councilman Lewis?
I just found this unusual, and just wanted an explanation of why it's being done.
Mrs. Townsend?
Thank you. Dr. Jones had lived in the First District and recently moved, and the home that she purchased is in the Second District. So, it took her out of her Planning Commission District. So, I had discussed it with her, and I discussed it with the mayor, and I discussed it with Mr. Pepper, to see what the options were. So, obviously, it could have left her seat vacant, but also Kathy Still has been our at-large appointee and lives in the First District. And Dr. Jones is a very valuable member of the Planning Commission, so in discussing it with the mayor, my recommendation to him, and, you know, again, checking the legality with Mr. Pepper, was that the two seats be changed, so that Dr. Jones could serve at-large, and Ms. Still could serve representing the First District, where she lives anyway.
So, basically, all you did was switch?
Yes.
Is this something that the city has done in the past?
Not that I'm aware of. I know in the past, when there had been one person, since I've been here, that left the Planning Commission because they moved, but they moved out of the city. Actually, two, I think two, had left the commission because they moved out of the city, but we hadn't had anybody move within the city. You know, if Ms. Still had lived in a different district, it wouldn't have been, Dr. Jones would have had to resign her seat, but because we had that option, we were able to preserve both, because both are very good contributing members.
No, I have no objection, I just wanted an explanation. Mr. President, in the future, is it possible to have an explanation somewhere, put on the agenda, or email the council members?
Absolutely. Councilman Sutherland?
I would just like to say for the record, that, Doctor, I'm in support of this movement, and that Dr. Bobby Jones has been a very valuable and vital aspect of the growth and development of the city of Dover. I support her efforts, and if this is a valid move or option, I support it.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will need a motion to approve these appointments. Councilman Anderson?
So moved.
Councillor Neal?
Seconded by Councilman Anderson.
Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. We now come to item number thirteen, council members' announcements. I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege and wish a happy fortieth wedding anniversary to Cindy and Robin Christensen, our mayor of First District. And just say the happiness and joy of their marriage is echoed in the happiness and joy of their children and their grandchildren, and it was truly wonderful moment to see on Facebook for a truly wonderful family here in Dover. Congratulations. Other announcements? Councilman Hausfeld?
As chairman of the Safety Advisory and Transportation Committee, this evening I was notified that C.F. Schwartz has made a five-hundred-dollar donation to the Dover Police Department to help with their ongoing efforts to help us fight violent crime, and I know of us sharing that appreciation with C.F. Schwartz, and I wanted to take a minute to thank him.
Thank you. Councilman Hutchinson?
Mr. President, I have personally received some information today in reference to you personally, that today is your birthday, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I don't know what you're applauding for. Any other announcements? Hearing none, I'm sorry, Councilman Sutherland.
Go ahead.
Councilman Anderson.
Just a quick one, Mr. President, and that is, I'd like to encourage members of the council to put on their calendar, September twenty-second, and the economic summit for Kent County of Red Del Tech. You can find out more about the event on Eventbrite or at Del Tech's website.
Thank you.
Councilman Sutherland? Two quick announcements. August twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, we'll have a walk-through, look at the exterior infrastructure of Simon Circle, Liberty Court area, to see what kind of improvements the city could help the community with.
Lincoln Park as well.
And Lincoln, yeah, and Lincoln Park as well. And also, I'd like to thank the three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred Fourth District residents that came out to support me for my celebration of becoming councilman. Thank you very much. And also, councilman, not councilman, but Councilman Anderson came out and supported as well, and also Senator of the Seventeenth District, Bushweller, came out. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Hare, and seconded by Councilman Sutherland. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Standing adjourned, thank you.[1663.71]